We have already called the meeting to order before going into executive session. We're now reopening an open session. We have some special visitors this evening. If you are a student representative, you're welcome to keep your video on. If you are one of the students we are honoring this evening. As well, if our family member of that student, you can keep your video on as well. For people that are just as audience members, please remember to keep your video and your audio off. Okay, Superintendent Beck.
So I'm very pleased tonight at the, you know, a couple of times each year. Begin the process of the bittersweet process of spending the last year with our seniors. Of course, for me, this is our first year and I've met very few of them in person. So it's very exciting to be able to celebrate the achievements of those seniors at Turner's Falls High School, who have been recognized as John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients for the 2020, 2021, with the class of 2021, because of their achievement on the MCAS test. In order for a student to qualify for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, they not only have to have scored in advanced in at least one of the ELA math and science, technology and engineering tests, but they must also have combined scores from the three MCAS tests that place them in the top 25% of students in the graduating class in their district. So I'd like to read off the list of names and offer congratulations to each of the students. I see that there are several of them who are in with us this evening, although not everybody made it. But I'd like to start off with this year's first recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Mercedes Bailey. Next recipient is Isabel Ferri. Next is Sophia Gobio. And Isabella Johnson. Also Senior Natalie Kells. Mercedes Morales. Carissa Olson. Catherine Reynolds. Shelby Tarunzo. Leah Timberlake. Jade Tyler. Olivia Whittier. Also Mary Lee Wiles. And of course Frank, she ducked away just as you turned the camera in that direction. And last but not least of the qualifiers of this year's John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is Luke Wisnewski. Congratulations to each of the members of the class of 2021. And I'm looking forward to getting to know more of you hopefully someday, actually seeing you in person instead of just being on Zoom. From the time that I've spent here, the short time that I've spent here in the district and had an opportunity to meet some of you and spend some time talking with Ms. Menard and Mr. Gaffigan, that this is an amazing class and you are the cream of the crop of the Turner's Falls High School class of 2021. Congratulations to each one of you.
Yes, all of our congratulations to you. Great work. And we do miss seeing you in person as well. It's, it's nice to see you at least on screen. Okay, I'll just do a quick welcome to visitors. I'll read the governor's order because I think that needs to be done officially. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. And as usual, it is being broadcast live this evening. And there will be a recording available, I believe, on MCTV by tomorrow or the next day, and also on our website as well, if people would like to see it who didn't get an opportunity. We also have people in our audience virtually, which is great. And public participation policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but no one requested participation this evening. So we'll keep that on the agenda as we go each time. Okay, Superintendent Sullivan, important events.
I saw Cassie made a face.
I'm sorry. I have a cold and I'm having trouble thinking and talking, so.
That's okay. No, Michael will be happy to hear that you miss him.
And that was right. And that was a nice thing that I called you back.
So I wanted to go through a couple of important events. First of all, reminding everybody who may be watching and maybe didn't get a prompt from a teacher that tomorrow is of course, an early release day for everybody in the school district. The next meeting of our pandemic response advisory committee will be on Wednesday, December 2nd at 4:15 PM. At our most recent meeting, we were pleased to have been joined by State Senator Joe Cumberford. Senator Cumberford will continue to be sent invitations to our P-RAC meetings and has expressed that she'll try to make every effort to join as many of our meetings as she possibly can. Thank you very much to Senator Cumberford for joining us at that important meeting. Today, I was very pleased to have 25 really amazing students from the high school and the middle school who came past Sheffield in the central office today and in their masked Montague mini march as a an offshoot of the 43 Mile Monties March, the two-day event that took place between yesterday and today. Not only was it very exciting to have met many of the students and to see them enjoying each other's company and working so hard, but I'm incredibly proud and the entire district and community should be incredibly proud of the work that these students have done. As of the time I had put out the superintendent's report to the school committee last week, they had raised more than $5,000 and had numerous non-perishable food items that they had collected. As of today, that number has gone to at least $10,000 with more money still coming in and donations. And at a time when the olive Western Massachusetts is really suffering and every place is vulnerable to becoming a food desert, I cannot thank the student leadership enough and I hope that their efforts will become contagious and that students, the amazing students in our school community will continue to support those of us in our community and beyond our community who are less fortunate than us. Congratulations to each of those students. And thank you all so much for that work. I also wanted to say thank you to Jennifer Luciano and Jess Ficula-Curtis for doing the walk today. I noticed that Jess, Jess was often pushing the shopping cart, which, and then it was good that she didn't have to push it full of food. It was great to have the firefighters there and put it back in the back of the fire vehicle because I honestly thought she was going to be pushing a shopping cart full of food all the way up to the high school. But thank you not only to all of those students, but also the parents and the other members of the staff who supported them in their efforts. And we hope to continue to see that, that kind of stuff over the course of this year to help people in the community. I also wanted to add that beginning on the Monday after Thanksgiving, from November 30th through December 17th, Gilmont, the Gilmontague Regional School District will hold its fifth annual district-wide food drive to support the Food Bank at the Montague Catholic Ministries. Boxes will be placed outside the front doors of each of the district's four schools, beginning on Monday, November 30th. And I will send out an email to families to remind them.
Thank you. And I think the hours for the boxes to be out, I think I saw somewhere 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yep, should be each day, Monday through Friday, or any of the days that the schools are open will be 8:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
Okay, great. And now we have our Student Council School Committee, Student Rep, reporting this evening.
So Audrey, if you have any report to give this evening, I'd like to introduce Audrey O'Keefe, who's one of the two school committee representatives. You just have to remember that you're on mute, Audrey.
Okay, I think I am muted.
I apologize. My computer became unstable again. Welcome, Audrey.
Thank you. Um, so last week we had our first virtual, well, technically second because we had a virtual spirit week last year. But um, this year we had our first spirit week. So on Monday, it was like a self-care, like pajama day. Tuesday, people were encouraged to show off like their favorite mask and like where they've gotten it and stuff. Wednesday was Decades Day. So normally we have each grade assigned to a decade, but this year we just had like whatever decade they wanted to do, people were able to do. And then Thursday was Jersey Day. So like you could wear your favorite like Patriots jersey or whatever. And then Friday, we did Class Color Day because that's what we normally do while we're in school because we have our pep rally and then like class cops in the gym. And then also on December 3rd, the Executive Board members of the Student Council were going to be attending a virtual officer shop. So each officer will go to specific workshops designed for their role on the E-Board. So like the president will go to workshops to improve on president leadership skills and like that stuff. Um, and that's pretty much it. We're just trying to come up with different ideas to incorporate everyone and like, especially like all morning meetings and stuff. We're trying to figure out ways to get everyone included and have everyone excited to go. But yeah, that's pretty much it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's so nice to have our reps back. You know, it's so nice to see you this evening, Audrey, and, and thanks so much. And anytime with these meetings, after you've made your report, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you need to leave, that's perfectly fine. We understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brian, I think you're up again.
So the Commonwealth again remains in phase, phase three, part two of reopening with the same restrictions. The overnight curfew between 10 and 5:00 AM, nothing has changed since the last school committee meeting. In, on the November 19th, Weekly COVID Public Health Report, in the area, only Warwick and Wendell had zero cases. All of the other 11 towns that we monitor had less than five, with the exception of Montague with nine, Greenfield had 13, Sunderland had 11, and Orange had eight. I'm hopeful that despite the fact that it's Thanksgiving, that they don't shift their data reporting to Friday. And we'd like to be able to get it as, as quickly as possible to keep an eye on those numbers. But I would anticipate the possibility that they'll shift that to Friday. In the state, over the last 14 days, as many of you know, the numbers of active cases have doubled. 28,660, it was previously a little over 14,000 at the last school committee meeting. In Franklin County, there have been 65 cases in the last 14 days as of November 19. I placed an update on the facilities work. In the school committee packet, we did get another update just prior to the meeting today. And so I will share that with the committee after the meeting and we expect updated air exchange reports within the first few days after Thanksgiving. Some of the air exchange work revealed that there were some places that there were, you know, that there was still some work that needed to be done. So those weren't reports that we were, that they were willing to or ready to share with us, but we expect to get updated reports as some of that work has gotten completed over the last couple of days. As far as staffing, the District Food Services Director position is posted. They've interviewed for the high school, high school life skills CNA. There's still one Gill paraprofessional position. Final, in the process of finalizing a reading interventionist for the middle school. The special education teacher that's being split between Gill and the middle school, there is actually, there are actually candidates that are in the process of being reviewed. We finalized the high school job coach position. We're still in the process of trying to hire two medical waiting room staff. And those folks must be CPR and first aid certified. So if you know of anybody out there who might be CPR and first aid certified and interested in those positions, please have them contact us. And we just recently posted a long-term substitute position for a second and third grade special education teacher at Sheffield Elementary School. I did also want to provide a little bit of pandemic-related information in my report. First and foremost, that we were pleased to find that as the close contacts from the case that we had in school that I had informed the community about last week, all of those con, close contacts have come back negative. What that basically means is that our mitigation measures work. There were several people in close contact with their case, with that, with that known case and fell into the category of close contact. So that was exciting to hear that, you know, nobody else had contracted. And that everybody is doing well. So I just wanted to report that out. We got the final, final report back from a close contact today. I also wanted to share and thank, share good news. We are one of the 134 school districts in the state of Massachusetts that have been approved for Phase One of the Abbott-Binax Now Rapid Point of Care COVID-19 Testing to be able to done, be done here on campus. And I wanted to thank Melissa Bednarski for her hard work and work coordinating with the other district nurses to get the application in and make that possible. I finished the licensure. This, I finished the, the grant and Melissa's taking a look over the the application for our basically being an extended lab that we have to apply for. Anytime you do testing, you have to get particular certifications. And so we're, we're in the process of obtaining that certification. If everything goes in a timely manner, we should get that testing, the testing supplies here on campus potentially as early as next week. In addition to that, that well, Ms. Ellis and Ms. Bednarski have been in touch with our district physician, Dean Singer. And he will be arranging for Ms. Bednarski to refer close contact for symptomatic staff for COVID testing through Franklin Medical Center in Greenfield. So that if for some reason our staff is a close contact here at school, that they won't necessarily need to go to get a referral from their own physician. And that should expedite the process, although that we still want them to contact their own physician. Having access to testing and not having to wait for that is really important. And I wanted to thank Dr. Singer for making that possible for us. I think that's it for the superintendent's report.
Anyone have any questions for the superintendent? Thank you for putting all the details about that quick testing and the details about the updates on the facilities into our packet. We appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda after the superintendent's report is Business and Operations Report. Joanne.
I have quite a few things for you today. So we're starting to work on the fiscal 22 budget. And there's a couple of documents in your packet for that. So the first document is our historical document showing what our school choice revolving account, our circuit breaker revolving account, and what our E and D has looked like over the years and what it's projected to look like at the end of this year and for next year. So we can see how much money we think we'll have available there. So in both the school choice revolving and the circuit breaker account, we try to keep about one year's worth of funding in there. Because as we start planning for next year's budget, we don't know what next year's revenue is going to be. So what we'd like to be able to base next year's budget on is revenue we already have, what we already know we have. And so this, this is somewhat predictable when we keep the balance about the same as what our revenue is because for instance, this year, we're starting the year with $610,000 in school choice revolving. We don't really know if we're going to get the full 596 or about 600,000. But we're planning on spending almost 660,000. So we're spending a little bit more. We really don't know what revenue is going to be this year. So we certainly don't know what our revenue is going to be next year. So we can just assume that it's going to be about the same, slightly less. And then plan our expenses accordingly based on that. So as you can see from the top chart, we're assuming 550 in revenue from school choice and so 550 in expenses. It's an early estimate. We have to wait until the very end of December, early January to see what our school choice revenue looks like for this current year. For circuit breaker, we do the same thing, but circuit breaker has its, its own set of rules where we can't have an ending balance that's larger than what our revenue was in the current year. So that's a state rule. So as you can see, the comparison of fiscal 21 to fiscal 22 revenue, the number's going down. We had a very high-cost student who graduated and so that, that student was bringing to us large amount of circuit breaker revenue due to the cost of the program. So I think there were actually two students that are no longer here. So the good news is we're not spending money for these high-cost students. The bad news is it means our revenue is going to go down next year. So we have to plan for that. So that's a loss of revenue from circuit breaker. And then E and D, the town of Gill has just approved their budget on Saturday, this past Saturday. And so I'm working with DOR to get our E and D certified. Hopefully by your next meeting, I'll have that certification number. But it's looking like it's going to be approximately 600,000, just north of 600,000 for E and D. So we had been trying to spend less and less of E and D as we went through the years to become less, less dependent on using E and D to support the budget. So that way it's just there for emergencies. But I don't think we're in a place to do that in fiscal 22 because all of our other revenue is not looking very good. So right now I estimated the 150,000 from E and D for next year. Does anyone have any questions on that document? Okay, so we'll move on to the next document, which is the projected revenue. Looks like this. So this is a very preliminary look at what our revenues might look like, all of our revenues for next year. And if you go to the bottom of that chart, you'll see that it's only $44,000 more than it is this year. So that's not good. But this is what we had talked about, you know, way back in the spring that we thought fiscal 21 was, was going to be difficult, but fiscal 22 was going to be much worse. So so far, that's where we're going with this. Now, until the state puts out some projected Chapter 70 numbers for fiscal 22, I'm just going to assume that we're going to be basically level funded there. We're gonna go back into the hold harmless section because we've had such a loss of enrollment this year. We've had a dramatic enrollment decline this year and that's going to cause problems with our Chapter 70 next year. So until we see what those numbers really look like and see if the state is going to ignore this year's October 1 enrollment when they're calculating Chapter 70, because there's a huge loss of enrollment throughout the state, we won't know what that Chapter 70 is going to look like. So for now, I'm assuming flat. And so that's what we need to shoot for. We might be able to have our, our wishlist items that we can then add to the budget if our Chapter 70 comes in higher. But our original focus is going to have to be just the $30,000 more than what we're getting this year. Our Medicaid revenue remains unchanged. Our interest income, the interest, we're, we're receiving more interest income. So I bumped that up about $1,000. E and D, I left flat at 150 as I mentioned. Irving tuition is an estimate of 11, 1,150,000, just slightly higher than is this year. Chapter 71, which is transportation reimbursement, remains about flat. And charter reimbursement remains about flat. We received a very preliminary affordable assessment number from the town of Montague, which is less than a 1% increase. So they've been, their affordable assessment has been in the four, four and a half percent range for a number of years now. And they've, they too have been saying that, don't expect this going forward because we don't know what our revenues are going to look like. So for next year, it's looking like something less than 1%. And the town of Gill was very concerned that, you know, if it was a 4% increase again, they may not be able to support Montague's affordable assessment. Our capital assessments are part of our debt schedules. So the high school is nearing the end of the debt and next year will be the final payment for the Sheffield Window Project. And then our grants and revolving account budgets. Our grants will be, remain about flat. The circuit breaker will go down about 100,000 as we had discussed earlier on that first chart. And our school choice revolving will go down about 50,000 as we discussed on that earlier chart. So all of that adds up to just about $50,000 more than what our revenue is right now. So that's our goal to put together a budget that we can support with these revenues. So as we go through this fiscal 21 year, what we're going to try to do is save some money. So that way we have a larger balance in our school choice revolving account. So we could use that to help support this, this off-year in fiscal 22.
Cassie, did you have a question for Joanne?
Has there been any talk about increasing the transportation reimbursement from the state given how transportation will probably look very different when we do go back to Emerson?
There, I have not heard anything about that, no. It's not usually one of the things they try to increase because it will look different. You know, ours, we're, as a regional district, we get about 75 to 85% reimbursement, but municipal districts get nothing. And the municipal districts that are, you know, in cities that are very crowded buses, but maybe fewer of them because they have more neighborhood schools, they get no reimbursement. So some of our buses are actually, they may be okay. You know, if, if we have less kids on them, it may be okay. We just really need to be strict about people riding, people that are eligible, only people eligible to ride, ride the bus. And we should be okay. So our revenue picture isn't looking great, but we knew that that was going to be coming. So fingers crossed that in January, when the numbers do come out, the Chapter 70 looks better than that. And when we talked to the towns, their affordable assessment is a little higher than the 1%. But we'll have to wait and see. Any questions on that, the revenue? Okay, the next item is.
I'm sorry. I think Bill has his hand up. Bill.
I'm just curious how you reflect on the Senate passing their $46 billion budget. How you think it, it might work out in, in conference committee and, and I mean, this is mostly just a thought for this year, not looking at the downturn next year. But is this year shaping up to be better than or about what you expected? In terms of Chapter 70 money, for example, specifically and any, anything else, because 46 billion, I think is a fair increase over what the state did last year and the news reports are focused on education is is a priority in this year's budget.
Right. So if you go back to that projected revenue sheet and you just compare fiscal 20, Chapter 70, the top line in fiscal 20 and the top line in fiscal 21, we had a pretty good increase in Chapter 70. And so I'm expecting it to be pretty close to our budgeted number there, the fiscal 21. So I'm not expecting any big surprise in fiscal 21. It's fiscal 22. I'd be happy to see a surprise there. So okay, so move on to the Gill lease. So the town of Gill, our, our building lease for the Gill Elementary School is coming up for renewal. So at the town of Gill, our, our building lease for the Gill Elementary School is coming up for renewal. So at the Town of Gill town meeting, they voted to negotiate that lease. And so we'll be talking about changes to the lease. So I gave you a copy of what the lease looks like now and a couple of suggestions on where, what we might change. So one of them, let me see. So it's a 20-year lease. So it would be another 20-year lease. There's no reason to change the number of years. The attorney did review this, and he suggested we remove the whereas. There's actually two whereas's that refer to a dispute. So if you look at the first page, this is the fourth and the fifth whereas, they both refer to some dispute that must have been settled by now. And so he suggested we remove those. And there's also language about snow removal in here. And since the Town of Gill doesn't remove our snow, we should fix that to match what's happening now, like we did with the Town of Montague vote. So if you review that and you see anything else you think should be changed, we can talk about it at future meetings. And then we'll be talking to the town to get that settled so we can have a lease in place by the time before it expires.
And I noticed, Joanne, that document, when it is finalized, requires everyone on the committee to sign.
Okay.
The way it is now. So unless that's changed, we'll have to just remind people we need that.
Yep. So if that's the case, then we'll have it here for everyone to sign. Okay. The next document is Irving tuition. So we do, we put together a preliminary tuition calculation. The tuition is based on our fiscal 20 expenses. And the enrollment is based on our fiscal 20 enrollment. So the whole calculation is based on the prior year, but then we bill Irving, it's billed based on the fiscal 21 enrollment for the first quarter, the first 10 days of the first quarter, first 10 days of the second quarter, and then each quarter after that. And so if there's no change in the first quarter, or as long as the students remain for the whole first 10 days of the quarter, they're billed for the full quarter. So it's a quarterly billing. So we have the tuition rates in this estimate of $1,160,000 is not necessarily what we're going to receive because enrollment does change throughout the year. So the tuition will be 11,948,000 for the regular ed tuition and $40,594 for special ed tuition. So if you vote those rates, then we'll be able to move forward with the billing. I've, I've sent this off to the Town of Irving to review also. So we usually do wait for them to review it. And if they have any questions, you know, we may have to come back to you, but I'm pretty confident that these tuition rates will stay because it is all based on last year.
So yeah, would you prefer that we vote it now?
Yeah.
If we need to, is that acceptable?
Yep, that is.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. And could you tell us what wording you would like, Joanne?
Sure, to vote the regular ed tuition rate of $11,948 and the special ed tuition rate of $40,594.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Haley, thank you.
Second.
And Heather, second. All those in favor? Okay, it looks unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a budget transfer that will need approval. So we have a recent M O A to move an elementary technology teacher to work in instructional technology. And so we're moving the funds from the salary, teacher salary line to the technology support line. So it's going from a 2000 series account to a 4000 series, which requires your vote. The total cost is $54,341.
I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Haley?
Second. Heather, second.
Yeah, any question or discussion about that? All those in favor? Okay, looks unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll have that here for you to sign, Jane.
Yes.
Okay, now just probably within the last hour or so, Brian forwarded you an email with an updated capital plan. So I had sent you quite a few documents for the capital plan. One of them was our preliminary plan, which was basically last year's plans with things move forward. And then the second set of documents was a five-page summary of all of the the first five years from the capital plan, from the property condition assessment reports, those P C A reports that we had submitted or we had distributed a couple of weeks ago. So I took all the numbers from that for the first five years, put it into a summary and then put together a five-year capital plan and a five-year maintenance plan. So that was in your packet with a summary and detail. But I took that and I further reduced it for you, and that's what Brian just sent out. And so it's just fiscal 22. It just went out to you and it's three pages long. And those are the capital recommendations for this year. So we can go through those. The first one is the Gill Elementary Roof. So you know, we've been applying to MSBA every year for the past four or five years. So if the Town of Gill would like us to apply again, the window opens in January, and so we'll apply for MSBA funding again. The next item there is to remove and replace the floor tiles. So our tiles are outdated and some of them are breaking and lifting in our estimated cost to cover the floors and um, just protect the whole, the whole, all the floors in the all-purpose room and all the hallways is about $50,000. But if we don't move forward with that project soon, it's, we have about a $10,000 project just to remove some old tiles, and that'll leave holes in the floor that we'll then have to go back and fill the holes before we can do the $50,000 project. So we really, you know, we had this on the capital plan last year, and it didn't go forward, but it really needs to be done. Otherwise, we're, the breaking tiles are just causing problems, and we really need to get those removed. And it's quite expensive to remove those old tiles because you need abatement. The next item on there is at the high schools to resurface the tennis courts. This was also on last year's capital plan. The Town of Montague is having a special town meeting and asked if we had any capital projects that we would like on this year's special town meeting, but that is a joint project. It would need Gill and Montague to approve it. And so I don't think that would be a good one to move into fiscal 21. So then when we move on to Hillcrest, we have the facade work for the brick corners that are coming out that need to be repointed. That's something that we could bring to the Town of Montague this year and ask them to put it on their special town meeting warrant, so that way we can have the money approved in January or February, so we can go out to bed, and then the project can be completed over the summer. So that's one of the items that I would recommend moving forward for fiscal 21. Replacing the playground, that's a C D B G grant. So I've been working with Walter from the Town of Montague, and we're hopeful that we can get a block grant to help pay for our playground study and then the upgrade. And then the driveway and parking lot repair at Hillcrest. This would just be to seal cracks and coat the driveway and all of the lots. And this is something that came from our P C A, which is the property condition assessment reports. Moving forward, we're on the next page, and it moves on to Sheffield, the Sheffield complex. So I have this broken out by the elementary building and then the auditorium, gym, and the central office building separately. So in the elementary building, we'd still like to build that wall in the library. But we did put up a wall with this company that they come in, they put it up, there's no mess, it's removable. And they did one in Gill for our waiting room area. So it went up really quickly. I think it was done in a day. It would be a great thing to have in our library to separate that very large space that's underutilized, and it's being separated by furniture right now to create two spaces in there. And the next item is the fire alarm upgrade. So it's an antiquated, non-addressable system, and it would need to set up building zone. So that was in our P C A also for 33,000. It was in two different years, but we we grouped it together because the whole system needs to be updated. So it would make more sense to do it all at once. The Sheffield admin gym and auditorium section, the paving and this section of the driveway also needs to be repaired. The access ramp where you drive into the to the parking lot would be about $10,000 to remove the ramp and fix that area. The Town D P W does a lot of our paving here, and so they did do a lot of the potholes around back behind Sheffield. Um, but this, they, they repaired some potholes there in the ramp, but they didn't replace the ramp. So that's one of the things from our P C A. Brick pointing, concrete repair and restoration, inspection, restoration plans is what the P C A recommended to get a facade inspection and prepare restoration plans to figure out what we need here for our brickwork outside at both the admin building and the gym and the auditorium. And they also recommended painting all the window trim in these two sections of the building. And then the last item is roof repairs at both admin and Sheffield. And I have them listed there for you. These were all separately listed in that P C A report, but we've grouped them together as they're all roofing repairs. So it's an assortment of roofing repairs. I don't think you need me to read through them. And so when you go to the last page of this, it has a summary for what our Gill request is and what our Montague request is. The alternative funding sources would be MSBA, so that would help pay for some of the roof costs for Gill. And C B D G, which is the block grant, would pay for some of the playground study at Sheffield or Hillcrest. So next, at your next meeting, we'll need you to vote on the capital projects, what will move forward to the towns. And so I'll ask if you can just think about two projects that we might want to ask the Town of Montague to vote on in fiscal 21 for their winter meeting. The facade work over at Hillcrest and the library wall. Those would be the two. And then the rest would be voted to be submitted for fiscal 22 capital request. Does anyone have any questions on those? Jen?
Um, when looking at the A track work, um, can they let us know if, if anyone need to change, if there was a wall added in that space? So we know if there's like, you know, while they're in there and they're kind of reevaluating if there would be any additional work that could be done while they're already in the building, if
Yep.
it's going to be necessary.
Yeah, I'll have Heath check in with them.
Or what?
Yes, I'll have Heath check in with them when they're here. Thank you.
Um, Bill?
Is the wall in this library a, a permanent thing, or is it a temporary structure? I mean, does it really fit in the capital category?
It's, it's a wall. It becomes attached, but it is removable to be used in a different place. So you know, it's debatable. It's the cost. It's changing the room to be two different rooms. It's changing the layout of the building. It could remain permanent, could remain there permanently, or, you know, it could be removed if we decide at a later time that we don't want it there anymore. We would have to change potentially, look at the heating and ventilation. And we would also look at the, I think, the fire alarm and, you know, there's a couple of building equipment modifications that do need to be made. But that's all part of that cost, the 15.
I would think that personally, I would argue against any inclusion of the wall as opposed to the changes you have to make in the physical plant to accommodate the wall. But if the wall is, is not uh, hard, you know, built as opposed to a removable product, I think that's a, that's the weakest part of the argument in trying to affect your change. I'm not arguing against the change. I'm just discussing the category that you're going to put this wall into, and you might want to bring something else forward like the infrastructure change unrelated to the wall, but not including the wall itself.
Yeah, the, so we looked at building a wall, just bringing a contractor in to build a wall. And the cost is much higher. It's much messier. And it, it's permanent. So this wall is not necessarily permanent, could be removed in the future if we didn't want it. If we only include the other structural things, it wouldn't reach the level of a capital project. And that's why we weren't including it here. I mean, if we bring it to the Town of Montague and they say, we don't want to look at this as a capital project, then you know, we, we wait because I don't think we have $15,000 in the budget to pay for something like this.
I would still think if you have some other, an alternative that might be your third choice rather than your second choice. And I can only reflect in my own experience, once looking at a a window in the basement of the old Montague Center School. And it was, should we replace this window? It was the window frame that needed replacement. The glass was okay. And I, and I maintain the position that that's not an expense of maintenance, that's a capital expense because a window lasts for a long time. A temporary, uh, the glass was, you know, in any event, that would be my only comment on this. And if you want to go forward with it, fine, but I think that may be an issue that doesn't get received well.
Cassie?
Uh, I think we went through something similar at Hillcrest a few years ago when we had to turn half of the stage into offices. So I think, um, being kind of proactive and, you know, putting it as a capital request, um, is better than, you know, having to run around and figure out options down the road if, if we don't do this. Just
Anyone else? Haley?
Joanne, it sounds like you're happy with the temporary wall that went up in Gill.
Heath is happy with it. I've not actually been there to see it, but he's happy with it. Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, so we will, um, work on this again next time. And thank you, Joanne, for making it much more And thank you, Joanne, for making it much more concise than the many dozens of original pages that the report contained.
Yes, it was a little overwhelming before.
It was, and this makes it much clearer, right? But I mean, it was a good, a good assessment to have done, certainly of the buildings.
Yes.
It's very thorough. Thank you. All right. I think that, anything else for your report? I think that's it, right? Yep. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the pupil services report. Diane, if you would.
Hey there. So I'm sorry, I didn't submit this in writing in advance to the committee. So if you'll just bear with me, I'm just going to read this, but I thought it would be helpful for the committee's benefit and for our larger school community to hear from me on a regular basis of just sort of all things people services. So I wanted to just begin for the, we have an enrollment report. As Joanne had said earlier, we have seen some declines in our student enrollment, which is consistent with other communities across the state. So our current district enrollments, we have eight hundred and fifty-one students in the district. Two hundred and ten special education students, sixty-five English learners. We have sixty-seven students who are choice in to the district. Sixty-nine students from Irving and currently eighty homeschool students. Homeschool is an area where again, in Gil-Monague and in other districts, we are seeing an uptick in families pursuing homeschool collectives or online homeschool curriculum programs and trying to adapt to the, the changes in their family life and education that's been brought by, brought on by the pandemic. So in Gil-Monague, we have almost twice as many homeschool students this year as we did last. So for our English learners, we have sixty-five English learner students. We do have a posting for a tutor. We have Title III grant funding that it's just shy of ten thousand dollars that allows us, or stipulations on the Title III grant. It is administered through the Collaborative for Educational Services. And so we are under the collaborative because we're essentially a low incidence district based on our enrollment numbers of L students. So we have just under ten thousand dollars. We have purchased some curriculum materials through this grant, including some take-home book bags and materials for students to be having, you know, putting books into the hands of children. And so not that I can say much positive about this pandemic, but I will say that with the technology, there has been some increased opportunity to utilize technology tools, translation, closed captioning. There are technology tools that have made learning a bit more accessible for our English learner, learner students as well as other students. And, you know, we are continuing to work, you know, with our ELL teachers and our staff on ensuring that we're using sheltered English practice, English immersion practices, taking into account students developmental levels. So if they are a newcomer and they're WEDA level, so that we can try to make education and learning as accessible as possible for that population. As the superintendent Beck had said previously in his district plans, we really would like to look at how to increase sort of bilingualism in our district. And we have a rich English learning community to, you know, to draw from. So moving on, special education and student support. Our, our school staff as a whole, the principals, you know, administration, deans, counselors, support tech staff, teachers, paraprofessionals. We are really working to, you know, to sort of embrace what the state refers to as general education recovery support. So there is a recognition at the state level when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that all kids have experienced some level, you know, all of us, some level of disruption in learning loss associated with schools closing unexpectedly and with this extended period of remote learning. And so I know that our, we, we're looking at that assessment data. We're looking at our kind of performance metrics, if you will, to sort of say, who are we concerned about? Who do we need to look at providing additional support for so that we can avoid having students sort of prematurely or inappropriately even be referred to special education? So our student support teams are meeting, our data teams are meeting. We're looking at those performance indicators for all of our students and really looking at how, you know, we can continue to engage our families and our students in you know, improving outcomes. And so within our special education population, you know, we're trying to, I, I think I skipped a line here and what I so in addition to sort of the general education support, recovery support, we're really continuing to work with families around removing barriers to students being able to participate. So very early on, I know Tina and the technology team. People did an amazing job getting devices into the hands of kids. We worked with our family engagement coordinator, Stacy Langneck on looking at hotspots, looking at making, making sure that our families were connected. So I think that we've really moved past much of those kinds of barriers. And now we're trying to work with barriers around family schedules and sort of the reality of support because there are students who struggle to maintain their attention to a screen and, and learn remotely while, you know, mom or dad or grandma or, you know, their cousin is there to supervise them. So we're trying to really help troubleshoot those situations for students despite the services and supports that are in place are struggling to engage in remote learning. So those, those kind of conversations at the individual and the building level are ongoing. For our student-specific special education kiddos, we are almost complete with our, what the state, and I think it lacks imagination. Honestly, the state has given them the name COVID nineteen special education learning plans. I just feel like they could have done better. But basically the state understands that an IEP is a legal document that, you know, determines the scope of services being provided to a student. Given a pandemic, given remote learning, if there are alterations to the delivery of that instruction, it's not a legal change to the IEP because that's still what is recommended for students. But what it is, is, is an articulation of what we're doing now to adapt or change the way in which we're providing services. And ideally, those plans are drafted in collaboration with our families. We have families who've said, you know, my student is medically fragile, my student cannot return to in-person learning, I will be home this year. So how can we deliver services in that home setting and what that looks like and kind of come to clear understandings with our families of what, what service delivery looks like at this time. So it's the state has a, a kind of a general deadline of December fifteenth to have these COVID learning plans out to families. I'm hoping that we can, you know, meet that deadline. I think our staff, Celia Snow, Cheryl Thompson, our education team leaders have been working with special education teachers and related service providers to get those plans done. They're about five pages each plan, so it's a certain amount of work involved. My office assistant, myself have also been pitching in, so we're hoping to have those plans out to our families. And again, they articulate what service delivery looks like in a remote model and as well as in a hybrid model when we are able to return to more in-person services. I wanted to acknowledge that we have some of our students with money from the town of Montague and the town of Gill through CARES Act funding. So the district is just simply, we're a collaborator but not a funder of this, of these support, supported learning centers. So we have been, I know Christine Lamosh has gone out to visit some of these sites and students are all very happy to see her. But we have students at the YMCA, we have students at J- Duke here in town, and we have students at NOMS Taekwondo Center in Greenfield. So that has been a resource for some of our families who are struggling to, you know, to supervise children and keep them focused on their studies while they're trying to work from home. So we, we have families who've been taking advantage of that, of that grant money from the town, which I do believe ends at the end of this year. Lastly, for the committee, I wanted to say that, well, two more things, sorry. I wanted to say that this January, last year I did come before the committee and I talked about our tiered focus monitoring coordinated program. Essentially the new name for coordinated program review. So the state comes in and they look at how we're meeting. I think it's indicator one through fifty in special education as well as through our civil rights. And so we did a self-assessment last year. They were supposed to come onsite in March. They, they were supposed to come onsite two weeks before we, two weeks after we closed school down. And so they are scheduled to do a virtual interview with Superintendent Beck and myself. I believe the date is January seventh. There's a couple of pieces of information that the district will be updating for this year. And they are going to be sending out surveys to our families in the next few weeks. So our families will be getting online surveys from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for those who have students in special ed. And one area where the district is, is going to come up short, and I want to alert the committee, is that we really don't have an active special education parent advisory council. So I will be looking to submit a waiver on this parent advisory council. I'm also, I know Haley and other there are other members of the committee who had looked at this issue of a CPAC in the past. And I did talk about potential of doing a regional CPAC with Greenfield, possibly Northfield, Pioneer Valley School and possibly Irving School. Because what we find in our small communities, it's really hard to ask parents to find childcare and come out for another evening meeting. And so we're even, we're going to try to even look at other avenues to promote parent engagement in Gil-Monague. But that, that CPAC voice is missing, I think more so now than any other time as we try to grapple with this issue of how do we provide services for students remotely? And so I did want the committee to be aware of that. And again, to be aware of that January seventh date. I don't think they'll be interviewing committee members, but we will be proceeding forward. And then the last piece, I don't think I've taken a single breath since I started talking. Is I wanted to give a law, a really large shout out to Stacy Langneck, who is in our family engagement role, fifteen-hour, part-time-a-week position. But she was contacted, hopefully I say this name correctly, by Chet Zernik and Ray Zukowski, who are with the Thomas Memorial Golf Club. And they did a golf tournament and they had over sixty boxes of food that were distributed between our school district, the Brick House, the Montague Catholic Social Ministries. And each participant, we had over twenty families who were benefit, you know, families in Irving, families in Gill, families throughout Montague who benefited from this donation. And each, each recipient had a turkey side dishes, a pumpkin pie. And Stacy was, I think, a practical one-woman show delivering all of these baskets yesterday. So sometimes we forget to recognize the hard work that's going on. And I really wanted to make sure that I called attention to that and let the committee know of that as well.
Thank you, Diane, and thank you to Stacy very much. Anyone else have questions or comments for Diane? Thanks so much for giving us so much good information.
Oh, Haley? Yeah, Diane, I just wanted to thank you for your work to pivot and advocate for student needs and family needs. I know how my family struggled with the remote school and we're relatively privileged. My, my heart goes out to the students and families who are struggling with this situation. And I know that you, along with many others, have just been searching for every possible avenue to support these families. So thanks.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda for school committee reports, we have the warrant subcommittee approval that we need. For the Gil-Monague Regional School District Accounts Payable Warrant number three-one-one-one, it's dated eleven twenty-five twenty in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Heather, thank you.
Second, Haley.
And Haley second. Any discussion of that? Again, I'll, I'll remind anyone in the audience that the business office sends the information about any of these warrants to the entire committee so that everyone can read them and ask questions if they have any questions about items or how, how it's worked. And so that's, and then in the absence of being able to have a subcommittee group sign, I've been appointed the signer. So, all right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. That looks unanimous. And moving on to business. First item is review and discussion of school reopening process. Potential vote to change the instructional model. That's on our agenda each time so that we can do an update. I think Brian, you have something on that?
Yeah, so in the superintendent's report, I reviewed the data and provided a summary in the school committee packet about the work, work on the HVAC system and then provided a staffing update. I did at this particular point, just wanted to provide an update on the process of bargaining with the Gil-Monague Education Association. The district and the association have been meeting for several months in an attempt to get an agreement regarding the reopening of schools this year. And at this point, we've not been able to reach an agreement and we will intermediation with the GMEA. So I just wanted folks to know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments in that area? All right, thank you. The next item is equity among schools. Again, this is a standing item because we want to be able to address it whenever anything is necessary. Anyone have anything this evening about that? Okay, thank you. I think we're good. We have a policy update. It's JLCEA. Life-threatening allergies. It's our third reading and therefore we need to have a vote. It's been in your packet for a while and the changes are highlighted thanks to Melissa Bednarski, the nurse. She has a long title now that I'm not remembering. What is it?
Yeah, she's actually been appointed as, as the district's nurse leader.
Okay, she's now the district's nurse leader. Yes, thank you. And she's been working very, very hard getting everything in line for all of these many things. And one of the things that she's done to help us is provide us with an updated modified policy which has added some information addressing the COVID. And, and the basic idea is that following proto, procedures and protocols shall be reviewed and updated. And now it is every two years. I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't turn that off. And we've added annually during the COVID nineteen restrictions that it can be every two years. And then principals will be sending out and posting the letter to families and there'll be a letter including a suggested list of nut-free snacks for classrooms when that becomes an issue. And there are also examples on that. So those things will make our policy much more complete. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Cassie, I believe. And second?
Haley or Heather? Whichever.
Okay, I'll pick one, Heather. Thank you. Any questions or comments on that policy? Any questions or comments on that policy? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you, that's unanimous again. We have already done the next item, preliminary fiscal year '22 budget discussion, projected revenues and assumptions. And that brings us to a presentation on winter athletics, a proposal and potential vote to approve participation. I believe Adam Graves, our athletic director, he'll be joining us. Hi, Adam.
Hello, how's everybody? So I'm going to give, I think Brian emailed you out our, the proposal that I have going. But basically what it is, is I'll step, I'll walk you through the, basically the MIA and the state guidelines and then our plan for sports itself. EEA did come out and approve winter sports with modifications. That's the first, that was the first step. So that happened about two and a half weeks ago, that happened. And then last Friday, the MIAA Board of Directors approved their plan in allowing sports to happen this winter with modifications. So that was a big move, that was the second step that had to happen. Third thing that happened was District One Executive Board, which is basically now after redistricting all of Western Mass, decided that we should hold off on starting winter sports until January 4th. Traditionally, winter sports start the Monday after Thanksgiving. This is how it's been for God knows how many years. But basically the reason, and I'm actually on the executive board, it's made up, a board made up of superintendents, principals, and athletic directors, I think there's 11 or 12 of us, is we wanted to get through the Thanksgiving holiday. We wanted to get through the Christmas holiday and give things, everyone a chance for everything to hopefully calm down a little bit before we got started. That was one of the reasons why we pushed the date back. Another reason is we didn't want to get started and then have to stop over Christmas break. I know a lot of schools are going to be shutting down for deep cleaning and things like that. We didn't want to have the kids come in for two or three weeks and then have to shut down. And the third reason is the guidelines just came out on Friday to give people a chance to modify the guidelines, come up with a plan, come up with safety plans, go before school committees, that sort of thing. Those are reasons why the date was pushed back to January 4th as a start date. And that's been the accepted date for all of Western Mass. Maybe you may have seen or read in the news that the state has approved sports to start on December 14th. But we have been, we overrule that, we have the ability to do that for a January 4th start. Right now, if sports are approved, they will start on January 4th with practices, 10 days of practice, and we would start game competition right around January 14th or 15th is the general plan. Words we hope to offer this winter, we hope to offer our swim program, our basketball program, and our co-op hockey program. Also possibly looking to have maybe a modified cheer practice. Cheerleading has been, is not allowed at basketball games this year and it's not allowed to go to competitions. But we're hoping that they'll be able to do something in that fall 2 season that we had talked about back, you know, a couple of months ago. That's going to happen basically March and the beginning part of April. Possibly doing a cheer practice, but we got to see what modifications come out with that. We haven't heard anything new about that yet. So I can just go through the modifications quick. The first one is swim. We have about 10 or 12 swimmers. The biggest swim happened out east. There are schools out east that have had swim. They have a little bit different season than us or whatever. And they had a successful season with these modifications. Games will sit on the opposite sides of the pool. The biggest one is that when kids finish their race, instead of getting out on the diving board and where they enter, they'll do almost like a cool-down lap to the shallow man and get out there just to promote, take away from people crowding at that starting area, I guess you could say. So that's one major modification. No one is allowed on the pool deck except for swimmers, coaches, and officials. So there would be no fans at swim meets this year because we don't have an elevated area. For example, if you go to Holy Oaks Pool, I think it is, they have an elevated area for fans to watch and site tech. We don't have that, so there would be no fans. And I'll touch on that a little bit later about the fans. The biggest thing with swimming is we, like we did with field hockey, we went to a Franklin County bubble. We're the only school in Franklin County that offers swimming, which is great. The problem being is that all of our meets are against schools out of our area. So we're swimming traditionally against Buckville, a couple of the Springfield schools, Holyoke, East Hampton, sometimes a Chickaby school in there, whatever. And so what we're looking to do is to create a swim bubble possibly where we swim against those schools. The other possibility is to do virtual meets. And this, to me, it sounds like the way it's going to go. The virtual meet will basically be, for example, if we're swimming Holyoke on, we'll say tomorrow, at 4 o'clock, we would swim, they would swim, we'd have officials there. And then we'd combine results to see who actually wins, who actually would win the meet. It's not the best idea, you know, looking at swimming as a competitive sport where you're getting pushed by the person in the lane next to you. You know, you look next to you and you want to swim faster, whatever it is. It is going to be tougher for our kids to compete and improve their scores, but it's going to give them the chance. And I'm still waiting on guidance on what's going to happen with swimming. We have a meeting next Wednesday where we're supposed to get more information. But that's what we're looking at, is either a swim bubble involving us and probably six or seven other schools, or doing a virtual swim meet type thing or whatever. So that is our, that's our swim plan. Does anyone have any questions on swimming? I guess we can break it down as we go, it would probably be easiest.
Anyone? No, I guess we're okay, Adam.
Okay, perfect, so I was swimming. Next one, I'm going to go skip to hockey. Hockey, we fall under Greenfield's co-op. And so what they come up with, we follow. Their school committee meeting, I want to say is next week. I want to say maybe next Tuesday or Wednesday, something like that. So what happens for hockey, we will follow under. I think this year we're going to have three or four kids who are going to be trying to play on the team. Some of the things with hockey is that they have to increase the bench area, which is something, the rink, and we have our own rink, which is a huge plus for us and having, you know, Collins Moyle and Rink, is that they're going to have to do that. There's no locker room use except for very minimal, like bathroom break type thing or whatever. So no locker room use. Kids are going to have to be masked at all times on the ice. There's no scrum. So for example, if two people are going after the puck, the third person can't go in. The whistle would be blown to increase the social distancing. And a lot of hockey modifications are things about the ice. You know, how is halftime going to happen? How are kids going to get dressed? And that's all stuff that's being looked at right now by the hockey committees. And again, we sort of fall under what Greenfield is going to do. We're sort of waiting, but we do have three or four kids that would be hockey players this year. So that's our hockey modifications. Again, if anyone has questions about that, and I'm waiting for Greenfield to send me all their modifications that they're doing, because again, their school committee meeting is next week. Again, and like hockey, we're a co-op school. So we're the only school in Franklin County that had, or not us, but Greenfield's the only school that has a team. So we would be looking at a bubble. And they would be looking, from what I'm hearing, at more of a northern bubble and then a southern bubble. So it would be us, Amherst, Belchertown, East Hampton, that sort of school and not have to travel quite as far down the valley. But again, that is something that's being determined as we just got the modifications a few days ago. The last one, which probably affects us the most, is going to be basketball. Our plan is to obviously run basketball. Right now, I am leaning towards, and this is again, just getting the stuff, is leaning towards doing varsity and JV and not a middle school program. This is going along with what Franklin County ADs have talked about. And we have a big meeting next Friday. I already know that Mohawk is, excuse me, Mohawk is probably out for middle school. Frontier is out for middle school, Mahar is out for middle school already. And we're gathering data, again, as people go to their school committees and stuff. But with us having one gym to run a middle school program, a JV program, and a high school program with the sanitization that we need will be difficult. The positive that we have is that many of our middle school kids actually come up and play JV basketball. Our middle school numbers for our girls' team last year, we only had seven girls. For boys, we had 12. But with our graduation rates and kids that aren't coming back to the team, we're looking at having a very young varsity and JV boys' team and a very young varsity JV girls' team on both sides. And so I think that many of the middle school kids will be able to play JV. There's not a real difference. Many JV programs in our area have middle school kids on it. So it's not like they're going to be going up against juniors and seniors. It's going up against other 7th, 8th, and 9th graders. And we've had that along. We have 8th and 9th graders that are playing varsity basketball right now because they're skilled enough and they're able to in our area. That's not something I'm very, I'm not too much worried about. I don't think there's going to be a lot of kids that won't get an opportunity to play with this decision. And again, it's coming down to safety, which I'm thinking of first and foremost for our kids and with the sanitization that we have to do. We did have one coach opt out already due to personal COVID reasons. Ed Marvel, who is our girls' varsity basketball coach, has taken a one-year leave of absence due to personal COVID reasons or whatever. Jim Kadron, who was our JV coach, has stepped up to be our varsity coach for the year. And Jason Salz, who was our varsity JV unpaid assistant, is going to be our JV coach this year. So we have had to do that on the girls' side. On the boys' side, we're finalizing everything with Coach Mullins, who has to, you know, is figuring out his personal situation and stuff right now. And we should know that within a few weeks. But we do have a plan in place as that's going forward. And again, I support those guys. You know, it's their personal decision. We have a plan, they'll be welcome back next year to our programs. And it is their personal decision as to what to do. So our basketball modifications, some of them are, there's no more than 18 players and coaches allowed on the bench area at one time. The bench area has to be expanded. So our gym is a big gym. If you look around the gyms in the area, probably the biggest in the area, which is a great thing. And so we will be able to provide enough social distancing for our players. Each player and coach will have their own seat. So as they come off the bench, they're not just going to sit wherever they want. You know, player one is going to know that they're going to sit in seat one. Player two will sit in seat two. That'll be determined before the games as to where they are sitting. We also have to provide an area for mask breaks. Again, our gym is easiest, so I'm already thinking now in the corners of our gym, behind the benches, we can rope off an area for kids to go, take their mask off for a moment or two as they come out of the game because masks are going to be required as they play. They're going to be required when they step on school ground. So that's one thing. We're going to institute a COVID coach. And so those of you who know, excuse me, I was grabbing a drink of water. Those of you in our gymnasium area, our kids are going to enter and exit through the athletic door, which is the blue door on the football side of the field. It's where you walk into my office, the athletic office. And we're going to have a desk sitting right there with a coach. Each program will have a COVID coach where the kids are going to have to answer the questions, just like field hockey did, just like golf did or whatever, and prove that they don't have a temperature, not feeling sick, or in close contact, so on and so forth, before they're even allowed to go upstairs into the gym. So that will be something that will happen before every practice and every single game, as well as before they get on the bus for any game. There is no locker room use this year. That's one of the EEA guidelines, that locker rooms are still closed. So kids are going to be coming dressed to the games like they were back in 5th and 6th grade. They'll have to wear their sweatpants over their uniforms, show up, answer the questions, go up into the gym, get ready to play. And we'll have a separate area where each kid will be able to put their bag as they're going to have to have their own masks. They're going to have to have probably a couple of chains of masks, their own water bottle and things like that. And again, this, us having such a big gym is such a huge advantage to us. Those are some of the little protocols. As far as game protocols, there's going to be no jump ball. They're going to do a coin toss. Whoever wins the coin toss gets the ball. There's no out-of-bounds plays underneath the basket. They're going to go from the sideline on a free throw. Only four people are allowed on the free throw area as opposed to six as normal. Fouls are going to be called quicker. There's no, don't get too technical or whatever. You can't impede another player from doing what they, offensive player from doing what they want to do. That's going to be called. So it's going to be a lot more free-flowing game. We have eliminated halftime, so there's not going to be a 10-minute, 15-minute time where kids are sort of standing around talking or whatever. It's going to be a 2-minute and 15-second break in between each quarter rather than a one-and-a-half-minute break and then a 10- or 15-minute halftime to eliminate that. Balls are going to be changed out every quarter and sanitized. Sanitizers, hand sanitizer, hand wipes are going to be available at the scorer's table. Our scorer's table is going to be socially distanced. We have the ability to do that with our wiring system and things like that. So I think we really do have a good plan. And then in between games, so before every practice and game or game, all balls will be sanitized, scorer's table will be sanitized, chairs will be sanitized, anything that's being used, any sort of training aids will be sanitized as well at the end of the practice and in between games. So for example, at the end of the JV game, we'll stop, we'll take a break, we'll sanitize everything before the varsity team comes out onto the floor for warm-up. So those are some of the plans that we have up for basketball. Again, one advantage to us is that we can block off our athletic area. So we aren't going to have kids traveling around the school at all. They're going to come in one door, go up to the gym, come out that same door and walk out to the parking lot. For our swimming pool, they're going to come in one pool, which is separate, or one door which is separate from the rest of the school, walk into the pool area and walk out. And so it's not like kids are going to be anywhere else in the school where transmission could happen. As far as fans, like I said, at our pool, fans will not be allowed just based on the guidelines that have come out. For basketball, we're not sure what is going to happen. It is going to be very, very limited fans, if any. I spoke to Melissa Lynn today, whatever, she agrees with this. And I've spoken to some other people and other ADs. Right now, we are going with the possibility of no fans. If numbers start to change and things go okay, maybe allowing one parent in at a time or possibly two, again, with our gym being a little bit bigger. Games are going to be livestreamed. We already have someone set up to video record and put it out for the girls' games. We're looking for someone for the boys' games. And MCTV is a possibility also, so that people that obviously can't come to the game, they have a chance to watch them. Just within the past 48 hours, I've been in contact with National Federation of High School of Sports. They are doing a deal where they put up cameras in your gym and then people can pay a subscription to watch the games or whatever. Also, like graduation, you can, you know, videotape that and put that out to the community and things. And that's looking at probably eight to 10 weeks away, possibly a little bit sooner. But that would be something else that we are looking into. So rather than just going on MCTV to watch the game, you're able to watch the game on this, on this free-flowing camera. It's a really neat way that they do it, where the camera sort of tracks the ball and tracks the play. I just got an email a little while ago, they're looking at giving us a discount for one camera. So I'm going to be in contact with them over the, over the beginning part of next week about that also. So firmly, if you believe that we do have a good plan in place. All the coaches have said that they will do absolutely anything they can to get our kids able to play. We already have a few community volunteers who have said that they will come in and donate their time to help with sanitization and be in the COVID coaches and things like that. So that's greatly appreciated. Make a plea, our kids are dying for sports. I have them in class every day. You know, the other day I walked, our kids took my laptop, I was working from school, and walked them around like the weight room and the dance room. And it's like, hey, this is what it looks like in case you forget or whatever. And so they are, they're dying for sports. If I can make a plea for us to hopefully have it, again, following safety protocols, that's sort of what I am looking for. Again, everything could change, things can change tomorrow, we don't know. But we've been asked by the head of the District One to come back with a rough answer by next Wednesday that we can start to put together our bubbles and our scheduling and our planning and inform officials and things like that because they're opting out for health reasons and trying to get things moving forward. Anyone has any questions? Please go ahead, I think Cassie, you have your hand raised there.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you. And as a sports parent who just had a kid come through the fall sports program, the first section of it, I know just all of the consideration and hard work that all of the ADs have put into making this happen for the kids. And I can tell, obviously from what you just shared, that, you know, nothing has been taken lightly. And yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, you know.
Thank you.
Principal Menard, thank you for joining us tonight. Is there anything you would like to add?
Sure. Adam and I are in close contact multiple times a week. And I know how hard that he has worked along with the rest of the ADs. I'm in full support of Adam's plan. I don't have concerns. He has addressed everything that both of us can think of. So I really hope that you guys support our students having this opportunity. I loved having the opportunity to go out to field hockey games. I was allowed on the sidelines and it was just, it was priceless to see our students just so enjoying the opportunity to do it. And our kids are good kids. They would follow the rules. I don't have any concerns about that at all. So I'm in full support of Adam's proposal to all of you.
Thank you. Cassie?
Could I make a motion to approve winter sports as explained by Adam Graves? And obviously, they could change any time, but right now, approving that's been invited to us.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Haley, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the plan as presented unless and until it might change? Okay, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, one abstention. Thank you. And thank you, Adam, so much for presenting that and working on it so hard to get things organized. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I'll keep you posted as, as things possibly change. Let's hope not.
Yes, but that will be helpful, right? Anything as it, as it develops. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam.
Okay. We have already covered Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan this evening and the Irving Tuition Vote. So the next item is approval of minutes. We have three sets, May 26, 2020, July 14, 2020, and October 13, 2020. If it's acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve all three together.
So moved.
Haley, thank you.
Second.
And is that Heather? Second? All right, thank you. Any discussion of those? All those in favor? Okay, that looks unanimous. Thank you. If anyone has any agenda requests, we're keeping track of things that we said we would continue to work on and bring back each time. But if you think of anything, generally we have our agenda planning either Monday evening virtually or Tuesday evening of the week before the meeting. And then we have the next scheduled meetings for December are the 8th and the 22nd. It occurred to me that we might want to think about that second date at our next meeting. We definitely need to meet on the 8th. If we need another meeting in December, we could leave it there if we need it. Or we could think about moving it up to December 15th. People might like to have that particular week. Christmas is only a few days after that. Not that anything will be as usual anymore, but people might appreciate not having a meeting that week. So if you think about that for next time, we'll discuss it. Okay, I guess if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Haley and?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All those in favor, happy holiday and stay safe and behave. Bye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.